I have, I want to say something to begin with. Having an ownership interest in a parcel of land in the proposed Crescent View Farm subdivision, I sought town council opinion as to my role in the public hearing, which opinion has been filed with the town clerk. I will not be participating in the matter as a planning board member and will not participate in deliberations or voting on the matter. I will be joining the audience and will be representing myself personally and speaking on my own behalf, consistent with town council direction and the State Ethics Commission's guiding, stating in part that municipal employee may always represent his own personal interests, even before his own municipal agency or board, on the same terms and conditions that other similar situated members of the public would be allowed to do so. With that being said, I'm going to turn the gavel over to Mr. Stetson, and I'm going to join him in the audience.
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing. I'm going to read as it was posted in the enterprise and sent to the different butters. Notice is hereby given pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81-K, 81-G through 81-GG. The rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land, the Town of West Bridgewater Planning Board will be holding a public hearing on Wednesday, December 6th, beginning at 7:30 in the McDonald Brown Conference Room at the Town Hall to discuss a definitive subdivision by Zenith Consulting Engineers LLC on behalf of 217 Crescent Street LLC, Hugh and Joan Hurley, an applicant, and Andrus Brothers. The intent of the plan is to create a 29-lot subdivision entitled and named Crescent View Farm, to be located at 217 Crescent Street. A copy has been posted with the town clerk. The going to do is we're going to open the public hearing. The applicant will present his materials. It'll be then opened for public comment and then the board discussion. I ask Mr. Andrus and his representative to come forward and make the presentation.
your name and address so the secretary can get it into the records.
Thank you very much. My name is Bob Forbes, Sepulveda GES, consulting engineers, representing the project. Just to let you know, as Jim stated, the name of the project is Crescent View Farm. It's located at a property that has an address of 271 Crescent Street.
So really 217?
I'm sorry.
217?
271.
Okay. What's your plans there, Jerry?
217. Is it 217? Sorry, I had it transposed.
No, that is right. Yeah.
It says 217. If it's 217, I might have just transposed it. I'm sorry. So anyways, this is the Google Earth image of the area. This is Route 24 here, the interchange at Route 106. I'm in a difficult situation.
Well, we have the plan.
So here we go. Route 24, Route 106, the interchange. This is Crescent Street right here. This is the elementary school. This is the property I've outlined in my page here. And as you can see, there's a mill pond is right next to the property. And there's, you can see there's not much surrounding this in the back. This is old Crescent Street here. Comes in kind of a triangular road. And this is also old Crescent Street. So it's two little old Crescent Streets. This is the one that's, I guess that's to the southwest is the one that we're... This is Mass GIS image of the site. And what I've done is I've highlighted the property boundary in green here. And with blue highlighter, I've highlighted the Mass GIS wetlands. It's not completely accurate, but it's a good general idea of where the wetlands are on the site. And what this shows is, so we've got this, the blue shaded areas are the wetlands areas. The tanish colored are the upland areas. So we have the upland here where all the houses are, obviously in the road. We have a wetland area through the middle of the site, and then we have this isolated upland area that's here. And the main reason I put this plan together is to show that this is an isolated piece to it from anywhere else, except if you cross wetlands to get to it. So that's what we're proposing to do. We're coming in here and we're trying to cross that, the narrowest part of the wetlands to access the upland area in the back. Just so everybody is aware, this piece, this small piece in the back, is the property that Hugh has, Hugh and his wife have ownership over, just to be, so everybody's on the up and up on this thing. So here we are again, Crescent Street, Old Crescent, Old Crescent, again, Route 24. Just point out that West Bridgewater State Forest is also up here, up here in this area. You have to go through the chair.
May I ask a question?
Let him make his presentation first.
Okay, well, I had a question. He was pointing to a lot of the stuff. I can put it back up when you're ready to go.
This is what we call the existing conditions plan on the site. So again, we've outlined in orange the property, his old Crescent Street and his Crescent Street. These blue lines are the wetland boundaries. And that's gone before the, the limits of the wetlands have gone before the Conservation Commission, and they've fully approved this line. So that line is just in stone now. Again, Mr. Hurley's property is this piece back here. And so the total amount of area that we're dealing with on this lot is approximately 60.90 acres. And as you can see, approximately half of the lot is wetland. All this area inside blue is wetlands, wetlands, small wetland areas. There's one existing house on the property right here that is proposed to be raised. So for the proposed project, what we have is, as Jim stated in the opening of the meeting, we have a proposed 29-lot subdivision. And what's, that's comprised of three roadways. This little cul-de-sac road directly off Crescent, we're calling that Jeffrey Drive. And then this road here, Fedway, and then we have another road along here, and that's called Henry Lane. What we have is we have on Jeffrey Drive, that's 435-foot-long cul-de-sac, and we have six lots that get frontage off of that. This is that wetland that I mentioned we had to cross. All in here is the wetland area. So the only way to access that is to put roadway through that, the narrowest part of the wetlands to have the least amount of impact. And in the back here, we have 22 proposed lots. So 6 and 22 is 28, but we have one additional lot here that's called a Form A lot that isn't off any new subdivision road. It's off of old Crescent Street. That's where we'd be getting frontage. Fedway is 2,540 feet long. Henry Lane is 1,318 feet long. So what, one of the features of this, to gain access, to get everybody from Crescent Street back here, we're proposing improving, widening, and paving this section of old Crescent Street. That, we did have a preliminary plan submitted to this board, and we met with them and had discussions on this project previously. And what was requested by the board is that the roadway from this area out to old Crescent be 28-foot-wide paved, and the rest of the subdivision roadway is a 24-foot-wide pavement. Just for comparison purposes, Crescent Street itself is, it varies in width, but it's roughly 24 feet wide. It goes in and out from 24 feet. What we've, what I've highlighted in the red, a pinkish-purple color here, is we're proposing sidewalks on one side of the road. So sidewalk here, there's sidewalk to get you out, and that meets the existing sidewalk on Crescent Street. Same thing on this cul-de-sac road, sidewalk, 4-foot-wide sidewalk on one side, and that ties in with the existing sidewalk on Crescent Street. For curving, we have vertical concrete curve on one side, the side width that is up against the sidewalk, and Cape Cod berm on the opposite side. For town, we're, for utilities, we're proposing it's going to be served by municipal water. There's a 16-inch water main out in Crescent Street that's going to service both subdivision roadway systems. We have, we're proposing onsite septic systems, and we have drainage system that I can explain quickly. The soils up in this portion, sandier and quote-unquote "better" soils. And we have an infiltration basin proposed here. This is an infiltration basin, and it acts as both an infiltration basin and a detention basin. Then back here, the soils are a little bit tighter, so we have a detention basin here, detention basin here. And all of the runoff from the roadway systems is going to be collected, treated in those drainage basins. And the post-development runoff rates are going to be less than the pre-development rates under every design storm up to, including the 100-year design storm event, which is essentially how it's going. So as I mentioned, we have to cross wetlands in this area. And to do that, we have an impact of over, just over 15,000 square feet of wetlands impact to gain access to this back portion. What we have to do to be able to do that, and we've met informally with the Conservation Commission as well in town, and we have, we're providing a replication area in here, which is a, which has a ratio of 2 to 1 replication. So we're providing, the proposed replication is twice the size of what the impact. So in other words, we're impacting 15,000 square feet, we'll be replicating, it's 31,820 square feet, so it's almost 32,000 square feet here. So we'd be impacting wetlands, but then replacing it with a new wetland system here. And this wetland system is designed to have better value and function than what's there now. We have, through the crossing, we have two 24-inch culverts to act as equalization pipes between the wet here and the wet on this side. And that is pretty much it. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Oh, one important aspect is, and we did discuss it some preliminary plan meeting, is we want the, there's a very sharp angle at the, where old Crescent Street meets Crescent Street. The applicant has control over this triangular piece of land here as well. So what we discussed doing is improving the geometry on that entrance, so he can actually access the new roadway from both sides, coming from both sides on Crescent Street. And what we did is we modeled that geometry after what they did on the other old Crescent Street. It's going to, strangely word it that way, but right up here, 450 feet or so, is another situation where they improved almost exactly the same geometry with an entrance, so it could be improved geometry. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, anybody from the floor? If you, please identify yourself and your street location, please.
Robert Amber, 265 Crescent Street. Wondering if there'll be traffic coming this way on Crescent Street to go in there?
Well, that's what we're hoping to avoid. What we had is, we originally had, this roadway came straight out and came straight into Crescent Street. And I think the planning board made an excellent suggestion to us in the preliminary plan to try to avoid that. They wanted us to, rather than have a direct intersection with Crescent Street, they want us to bring it out this way. So this will, this will be a paved way all the way out to here. We're not proposing on improving existing old Crescent Street and this side at all. So should take all of the traffic along the paved road. And again, we improved that geometry there to be able to get into and out of easily this road through, to Crescent Street, to in front Crescent.
The other quick question is, you said the water is on, the water supply is on Crescent Street?
Yes.
Well, my water supply is on old Crescent Street.
Okay. Will we, will we dealing with the, hopefully the water department will chime in on whatever comments they have. We're obviously going to do, and we're obliged to do whatever they want us to do to connect it. What I'm aware of is a 16-inch water main out here, and that's what we're proposing to tie into at this time. If they want us to do something else with a loop or whatever, I'm sure Mr. Andrus would be happy to take care of that. Whatever they want us to do, that's what we're going to be able to do, tie it to the
Anybody else?
Sir.
Go ahead.
Dylan Cregan, 37 South Elm Street. Are you planning on reading into the minutes, the comments from the Conservation Commission?
Yes.
Okay. I have some stuff on that. Should I hold my questions on that till?
Yeah, I'm going to read it after the public change.
Okay, so I should comment on it now, Jerry?
Yeah, go ahead.
So in the comments, Tim outlined that in the rules and regulations governing subdivisions of land in the Town of West Bridgewater, a lot area is defined of, the horizontal area of a lot exclusive of an area in the street or recorded way, open or proposed to open to the public. A lot's created subsequent of April 9th, 1979, at least 90% of the area required for zoning compliance shall be contiguous land and other than under any other body of water, including watercourses, any bog, swamp, wet meadow, marsh, as defined in Section 40, Chapter 131. Under that definition, in the planning board's bylaws, nine of these don't comply. None of these lot areas don't comply with that definition.
All of these lots are designed to comply with that. So I don't agree with you. We can, as we go through the process, we can respond, and I can tell you how they do comply. What it means is you need 90% of the lot area, lot areas.
To not be wetlands.
Yeah, and we have that.
On all those lots, you have 90% of the area that's not wetlands?
Yes. Contiguous. Has to be contiguous, so you can't have upland on one side crossing wetland, upland on the other side. You can't add those two together. You have to be, that's all be contiguous area.
Do you agree with that, Jerry?
Everything I've seen, it goes according to our plans.
And this is all going to be reviewed by another third-party engineer. I don't know if Dave reviewed it, Mr. Chairman?
We have not got a report yet.
Okay. So everything that we've done is going to be double and triple-checked by the town's consultant, I'm sure. And we, and I will triple-check that. We, that was, that was one of the parameters we designed this whole thing around, what you just read.
Okay. Did you submit a tree plan?
No, we've asked for a waiver on the tree plan.
Will we, are we going to grant a waiver on the tree plan?
That'll be discussed.
Okay.
One of the problems that we've found recently, we require a tree plan, but what has happened is a lot of people by the houses don't want the trees. You know, they don't want to maintain and don't want the trees, even though the trees are put off the property. It used to be trees were put between the curb and in the sidewalk. We no longer, sidewalks are going to butt up to the curb. So there won't no longer be a grass space because there's always one person in the subdivision who doesn't want to mow that one to two foot of grass.
Right, but under the tree plan, isn't the applicant required to?
He can waive anything. We will discuss it at a point.
Isn't he required to make you aware of any trees that are over 12 inches in diameter?
That's what they, that's what the requirement asks for. And what we're asking for is we show a limit of clearing of all the trees, and we're trying to maintain as many existing trees as possible here. You can review the plans, look at the limit of clearing line, the proposed tree line. And everything inside it has to go. We can't have a 24-inch wide road, 24-inch wide tree in the middle of where we're proposing a roadway.
So those are basically what I think he's talking about. It's not on the lot, it's on the roadway going in.
Exactly.
It's just obvious to you, but they, we don't allow to clear cut 60 acres of land.
Right.
I mean, in most cases, it's to his advantage to leave the tree. If it doesn't fall within the foundation of the septic on the property.
I've done a couple of subdivisions now with Mr. Andrus, and that's exactly his stance on this, and that's how he's proceeded with when he builds the subdivisions. It makes the value of the lots less if you clear cut the lots. So we've shown on these plans where we're, we did our best, especially when we got into the back area, it got very complicated, but we were able to design grading to be able to maintain around that loop road that I showed here. You can see, see that, like, I don't know how you describe that line, that's a tree line, that's a proposed tree line in there. So we designed this, the grading back here to have a large existing tree area in the middle of that circle of roadway area. And again, throughout every lot, we're trying to, we're showing where we're proposing the proposed tree line, and obviously this is a detention basin, so we have to cut around that to be able to build that. But then we're showing the proposed tree line in and out. So the bottom line is, the request for the waiver for that tree plan is because I, we don't understand what the purpose would be of us going out there and surveying every 12-inch large a tree, just to come back in and say, everything inside the proposed tree, everything outside the proposed tree line is coming down.
Oh, I just thought you wanted, because we have required to do it. 42224, streets shall be laid out so as to intersect at nearly a possible or right angles. No street shall intersect at any other street at less than 60-degree angle. What's the angle of that road coming in from Crescent?
This is now, it comes in, there's a short section of 90 degrees, comes straight in, and then it takes a turn, takes a, I think there's like a 60-foot radius in here right as you come in. So right in there, it's 90. This is, this is a little bit less than 90. This is like an 85.
What's the angle from Crescent Street to your Fedway? The angle?
From old Crescent Street?
Right there.
I don't know, it looks like it's about maybe 30 degrees. That's what the plan, so when we met with the planning board earlier, that's what I was discussing. That's not desirable. That's an existing road that's 30 degrees. So when they asked us to look at this, doing this, that's exactly what we accomplished. We got, we got rid of that 30-degree intersection and created a more geometrically accommodating intersection here.
When did you meet with the board before? This is the first?
Three, four months ago. It was nice weather.
It's a preliminary that we do with everybody.
Okay.
It's, it's in there. You can read through the preliminary process if you'd like. We might do that whole process.
Under alignment, this is, would be considered a minor street?
Correct.
Which is supposed to have a width, you know, with a right-of-way of 50 feet? Does that have a right-of-way? Read all the way through 50?
Yes, all the roadways in this subdivision have a 50-foot right-of-way.
The last house on the development, and as we see it now, the bottom left hand corner, that shows something going to the rear property. Is that going to be another development going back there, a road?
If you continue to read through this, there's a requirement to leave, we're not building a roadway out here.
We can't landlot property adjacent to, so it's an east.
There is some upland back here that we're required to leave a right-of-way to, and that's, I guess that's for the case if they ever want to develop this property, they would have, be able to access it through that system. But we're not building the roadway back there, we're truncating the roadway here. They can, if somebody else ever comes up and wants to do something, they can go through this process with this board to do that.
Does Crescent Street have natural gas?
Don't know.
I don't know.
It does, yeah.
Gas may and shall be installed if gas connection is available.
That's up to this, that's up to the person doing the development.
It'll either be propane or electric.
Even though it's in your rules and regulations, it's up to them?
There's a lot of things in there that are arbitrary. It's, we can't demand that they put gas in. They have to provide some sort of heat for the dwellings, but.
Oh, is this, this doesn't, this, this is just a suggestion?
No, we, it's in there, so if, if gas is going to be, it's done at the expense of the developer.
Right, like Lampo's Estates, Lampo's Lane has natural gas at South Elm Street, and that was all propane. That was.
That's correct, because the gas company wouldn't come and put it in. So that's why we don't deal with them anymore. That's typically the case with just about all of the subdivisions. We work on now, the gas company's not willing to install gas on the subdivision roads. They may be here, I don't know. I don't know, but it's going towards, we're doing one now, it's in Norton, it's going to be all electric, because that's the way the energy codes are going, so.
So do they need to get a waiver or anything for anything that's not compliant with this rules and regulations?
That, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt, Mr. Chairman.
We just, it's as spilt in there, they don't.
What, the town's consultant will review. The towns consultant will review, will go through that thing, item for item. If he sees any waivers that we haven't requested that we're going, that we should request, he'll note that. And if we agree with that, we will request that waiver. So, that's one of the things that they, they typically do a very thorough job and go over everything with a fine tooth comb and make sure it's implied with everything that the town asks for.
So, I'm going to butter it to three of the properties on Lampo's Estate. And that's why I'm here tonight, because I don't want the people in this room to go through what we went through as a butter's to a project like this. So, in this document, that's a suggestion, lots shall be prepared and graded in such amount of the development, one shall not cause detrimental damage to another. And on Lampo's, all the grading was done, all the systems were put in place, but nothing was tied in for two years. And we got all that water runoff.
Was any complaint ever made?
Yes, I came before this board and I talked to you because he had to recuse himself on that. You guys sent a letter to Mr. Andronis, a certified letter to Mr. Andronis, ask him to tie in, and it got tied in three months ago. That was over two years ago. So, do you remember the house on Lincoln Street, the red house was having a lot of coming in through the basement windows from the water runoff?
It wasn't from, that house has had water running in before anything else was ever done. Because I braced my new, the people who own that house. That house is...
So, my request would be that, I don't know what kind of permit you have over the order of operations, but that should be something that should be taken care of.
It will be discussed.
I can quickly go over that. In this particular, I don't know anything about that project, didn't design it, don't know anything, don't even know where it is.
Thank you.
But, what, so our detention, our infiltration basin, this is the first one, everything flows downhill. This is higher than this, so everything flows down this road into this detention basin. If this were to fail, there's what's called an emergency overflow spillway that flows out this way towards the wetlands, doesn't go anywhere towards any existing house. Same here, everything flows down this way, from a high point here, down this way into this basin, emergency overflow spillway out towards wetlands. Same thing here, same thing here, so there's no chance that that can happen on this project.
Right, but it shouldn't take two years to get tied in, that's my comment.
We're having a discussion, Lampo's, we're going to take after this, we're having a discussion on the acceptance of that plan, so why don't you save your, till then, would you like to, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a bunch of questions. So, when was this land perked?
Can I have your name and address?
Sorry, Karen McElwain Ryan, Seven Copper Beach Circle. When was this land perked?
We've done dozens of perk tests, it was last summer sometimes, June, June-ish, July?
Last summer when we were in a drought.
Actually, we were not in a drought this year.
We were in a drought.
We were not in a drought this year, man, there was, this has been one of the rainiest summers we've ever had in the Boston and Massachusetts area.
So, it was done this summer?
This past summer.
Not last summer?
No, not last summer, this past summer.
Because I saw your trucks and people park testing last summer.
Well, you didn't see our trucks, we, the Zenith Consulting engineers, we didn't do the perk test here. Greg, a guy named Greg Boonavich, who's a survey, he did the survey, who did this subdivision, the survey for the subdivision, he's also an engineer, he also happens to live right about here on this flip, and he lives in town, and he did the perk test here, and they were done, I believe, in June or July.
It was a summer month, I know, but they were all witnessed by the board of health.
And the board of health was there.
Rules and regulations for the town.
Because everyone in town knows that that land is wet. We walk our dogs back there, you get stuck in the land. All of us go back.
I agree, it is very wet, it's very wet right through all these wetlands. This is, this goes up quite a bit, this, this area here is about ten, fifteen feet higher than this area right here. So, all I know is the perk test was done by Mr. Boonavich, witnessed by the board of health in town, and we have good perk tests for every lot here.
Is there anything that we can do as townspeople to request additional perk testing in that property?
Board of health is the people that oversee it.
We haven't got the lady yet, but Rob said tonight to let you know that they did approve it at their meeting early tonight.
The board of health also reviews the plans that we submitted to the town, it's a state law that the board of health reviews these plans, and if they have comments, they have forty-five days to get them to the planning board. So, the board of health is involved in this process. So, they're saying that they're good with it, so...
That old Crescent Street is currently a one-way going in that direction, is that being taken away?
It's supposed to be a one-way.
I don't know, there's no signage out there.
There actually is.
I had a policeman tell me it was one-way, he was parked at the end of the street.
Well, we're planning on coming in and out in this direction.
Well, but that's what I'm asking, the planning board, that street is currently...
It's going to be built to code, which will be a two-way street, and I have never heard of that being a one-way street.
There's a sign up that it's a one-way street. It's at the end where you're coming in.
Right, and the policeman stopped me and he left me alone because I told him I lived there, he told me it was one-way.
Well, it's going to be a, what, twenty-four?
Twenty-four foot wide.
Twenty-four wide roadways. The sidewalks and everything are going to be adjusted, made up to newer standards.
So, I'm sorry, I'm not sure my question's not being answered. So, we're changing that from a one-way street and like, who has the authority to do that and how?
That, that road originally was Crescent Street. It's called Old Crescent Street because they straightened the road out.
Understood, but it is currently a one-way street.
It's property that's owned by, I mean, I, if it's going to be made two-way, it's made two-way.
But who has the authority to do that? It's currently a one-way street.
The planning board has most of the authority over the roads in town, so...
Yeah, we don't, that's actually board of selectmen that have the authority, but, yeah, I've seen the one-way signs there before, I'm just looking at Google. I haven't shown on that one.
It's a very old, it's a very old sign.
It's there, it's covered with bushes.
I admit, if there's any cops here, I've broken the law because I've driven in that way.
Yeah, if it's, if it's, if the board of selectmen had voted at one time to make it one-way, then they would have to rescind that. That would just be something on their part to make it two-way. But the whole intent, and he mentioned it before, and I know we talked about it in the preliminary subdivision, was the alignment that he has right now is to keep everybody off the rest of the old Crescent Street portion where there's a couple of houses. I know Spady used to own a house, I don't think they own it anymore, but the whole intent was just to keep, you know, rather than tean it off to the old Crescent Street, people wanted to take a right and they go down the dirt road, pass Spady's and all. I mean, the intent there was to get hundred, you know, as, as close to hundred percent of the traffic as possible away from the rest of Old Crescent Street, so...
Is there going to be access, as you're coming in from Old Crescent Street, going down the one-way, coming off of Crescent, the way your road is running up, is there access from Old Crescent to cut in there, or you have to go all the way to the end to come back up?
We will provide, the planning board is okay with this, we're planning on providing gravel, gravel road, it's pretty much at grade here, so they might have to come up an inch or two right in this area, so anybody who wanted to travel out this way to Old Crescent, they could, they could get right onto this road and come out this way.
Or anybody that wanted to go in, which was Robert's point before, there's going to be increased traffic on the dirt road.
If there's a do not enter sign here, I would suggest that the do not enter sign here as well, that's, the planning board can ask us to do that, we would be happy to comply with it.
I'm Dan Petronelli, I bought, I own this place.
This piece, right?
I'm on two seventy-five on the old, on the improved part. So, I, so I was just hoping that you could do something, just so people don't start skidding down the dirt road, if the main road is going out. So, is there anything that you can do to prevent the main traffic taking a sharp right and off the dirt road where I live?
Talking about right here?
No, right, right on Old Crescent.
But why would they want to? I mean, if it's paved, wouldn't it be easy to just?
Well, I don't know, you could have, like, you, somebody suggesting maybe a do not enter sign.
I don't think we have any problem with that. It's a good suggestion.
I mean, that would be appreciated.
I mean, it would, it would prevent anybody living here from coming in this way and accessing the house, you'd have to come around this way and go in.
That's the way they go in today, because it's a one-way down.
That's fine, if that's okay with the board and the people who live here, we're happy to do that. We were planning on doing this, assuming if somebody who lived here was coming down here, they would want to just zip down here, paved road right to the house, but we'd be happy to put do not enter signs right there. It will prevent people in the subdivision going this way.
Well, that would be...
We'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, because otherwise, they're going to take a sharp right, if it's a skinny road, I mean, a sharp left, it's a skinny road.
That's what we felt, it was unlike, I mean, if that were me, I would not be doing like a hundred and sixty degree turn here, I would just travel out to a ninety degree turn and go.
Well, we want to make sure they don't.
No problem.
We appreciate it.
I also don't understand what you're saying, though, and maybe it's my non-math brain, but if you're coming down Crescent Street from twenty-four, they're going to pass the first entrance, they're going to go to the second entrance, it's harder turn in from Crescent Street, because scary people are coming that way, they're not coming the other way.
Right, they're not.
Are you talking about people coming in, you're worried about people coming in this way?
May I point to something else?
Yeah, sure.
If you're going, you're coming from twenty-four here, you're coming up this street, and you're going to come in and then you're going to hook to the left?
Let me blow up, this is on a small scale, so it's hard to see, but I can put up.
Thing is, you can't prevent what somebody is going to, I mean, you can put all the signs in the world.
I think that's dangerous.
I, yeah, but the thing is, is if it's posted and there's signs and there's everything else and somebody gets in trouble, the liability is...
This is what we have now, see this, this lighter, this is the EP, means edge of pavement, that's the existing edge of pavement. So, right now, that's what you would do. What we've designed is a ninety degree turn in with a sixty foot radius here and then in. So, you can come in from both sides very easily, this is accessible from both sides. Whereas if, it, it's, this is the existing one. So, this is existing, this is proposed.
She's talking about people coming in this way and...
Yeah.
So, could you make it a dead end road?
The problem you got is you would, the reason that that road, that is a town maintained road, even though it's dirt.
Not very well.
Well, it's a dirt road because they want to keep it a dirt road. But they go up there periodically, new material down and grade it out, but you've got to have access to power and you can't just make a dead end road because you'd be plowing dead end both directions.
Everybody's going to come down that part, because you could avoid Crescent Street, which is very busy at five o'clock, so they're going to take that turn, and then they're going to take that sharp left and they'll be...
Well, they're going to turn it out, so it's a ninety, not a...
No, I think she's concerned, you're concerned about this turn.
Yeah.
I can't see people doing that. If I only had my choice, I would drive hard and making a hundred and sixty degree turns.
Right, and they could come right onto our property.
I wouldn't do it, I would travel down onto the paved road and go.
I would.
That's just me.
Well, there could be, there could be a sign, not to go, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, oh, yeah, there could be a sign at the beginning of that road saying no left turn, because there are trucks parked on that road, there's boulders in that road, there's swamp, water on that road, it's really a mess.
Yeah, that's why we want to improve this one and have it paved.
And if they use that, that's fine.
No, we'll be happy to, whatever the board recommends for signage, we'd be happy to put it out there. Yes?
Maybe the question for two hundred Crescent Street. First question is, did you consider this is town owned, owned the land?
No, that's owned by the project, that's project owned, yeah.
So, this is a, so if you say this road can just come out here, is that better? And here leave like a, a green, green, green area?
Well, they need the frontage on Old Crescent Street.
Yeah, we want to maintain the frontage along Old Crescent for this, for this lot.
So, you just say if you cut it here, then the road, the driveway can't go in here?
We're trying to keep the road away from that next house. Well, yeah, we tried to, one of the things we're charged with doing is, Petronelli, we tried to do the best we could to keep everything as far away from your property and these two, I don't know the people, we're trying to do whatever we can to keep it away from, from these, so there was a possibility of us coming down and coming right here and getting very close to this property. And that's why we tried to keep it as far away. The only existing house here is the one right here, the one that's on the property and that's coming down. So, by putting it here, we kept it as far away from any neighbors as possible, was what we were trying to accomplish anyways.
Okay, also, these, these, these two is pretty close as well. Then here, I'm just curious, this Jeffrey Drive come out, you know, across the street, where is the Smokey Drive? Because I will wish that in the future, if you can put the cross street house, so we know what's going on.
This Smokey's place right there, so that's right across from the, that's the existing, coming across from the existing house that's transferred out to this one. That's right about here.
Okay, so this driveway, actually, it's just across the street, it's same as the old, the old house, the paving area right now.
Your, this...
There's the old house, that old house, is this the old house, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's, that's the existing driveway, right?
Yes, it is. So, we're moving further to the, what direction is that? South, northeast, northeast.
There is a, if you want to see, so there's the drive you're talking about.
Yeah.
And here's the existing one. So, there's drive.
I think she was here.
Okay. It's about, it's about fifty or sixty feet this way from that existing driveway.
Okay. All right, so that's it, my question.
Good, next, tell us by yourself.
Brian Morl, four nineteen Spring Street. I have two questions, actually. First question is, do all the lots in the proposed development meet the lot size setback frontage requirements, or are you seeking a variance on any?
No.
Okay.
We're not, we're not seeking any variances for lots.
And then the second question, you might have actually answered this in your presentation, I apologize if you do.
No problem.
You said you divide, designed the detention basins to the hundred-year storm event, what does that give you for a pre and post-construction runoff coefficient? Is it one to one, or are you going to have better negative runoff coefficient post-construction?
We have, in every design storm, we have a lower runoff rate in post-development than we do in...
Okay, yeah, like I said, I thought you might have mentioned that and I missed this.
No problem. It's hard, it's hard for even me to keep that, that verbiage straight in my head.
I have another question about the storm drains or the retention ponds. We have a retention pond today that is over by Stony and I guess the old, old Crescent. So, at the, as you're going into like Mill Pond and Jewel, that's completely overrun with weeds to the point where it's like taken down the fences, et cetera.
That's town property, it's the DBWs just needs to take care of it, that was needed over to the town.
Okay, because my question was going to be, what is going to be done here to maintain the retention ponds?
I can answer.
A lot of the, a lot of the ones that are built now are built so they can be mowed by the person. They're, they're not designed to hold water, they're designed for the water to come in and stay for a period of time and then be gone. So, most of them are graded in slope that you can drive through with a lawnmower, and if it's needed to the town, then the town will mow it.
But here, you're in a very wet area, right? The backside of that is very wet, so how do you...
And it would probably be left with, right with vegetation that is same as when they put the road through.
This, so this is the wetlands line here that I'm highlighting. This, so this is the wetlands line here that I'm highlighting. And the town requires a fifty foot no disturb zone from the wetlands. So the closest we touch is fifty-one feet away from those wetlands. So it's not wet here. This is, and this is an infiltration basin. It's exactly as Jim had described. This is designed where it's easily accessible from either the road or this is all a drainage easement back here for the town to, to be able to access this property in the future and be able to mow that. Now, this particular one is infiltration basin and this will have to be mowed. The other, the other two that I mentioned that were detention basins, those have vegetation designed in the bottom of them to not be mowed. This, they become wetlands. So you plant wetlands vegetation in the bottom of them and those are never supposed to be mowed. So those you will see catanite tails and other wetlands type species growing up in them and those won't be mowed. Part of when we go through, now this drainage report, a snowmarten management report has an O and M plan, operations and management plan, and it designates Mr. Andronis's company as responsible party for taking care of that until such time that the, the town takes the roadway as public roadways. And then when they do, that would become the responsibility of the town to, to mow that. So I hope that answers your question.
I'm sorry, that's the responsibility of town to mow that? Like, how are they accessing it?
Let me repeat. Up until the time that the town takes ownership of the roadway, they have, Mr. Andronis's company is responsible for operating and maintaining the entire system here. When the town, so what happens is when you get a new road, you may be aware of this, but then once the road is built, you can petition the town to take the roadways as public roads. If and when the town ever chooses to do that, the operate, the operation and maintenance of all of these basins would then become the responsibility of towns. And there are easements here to allow the town or any party responsible for operation, operating and maintaining these basins to be able to access that. See, there's drainage and wetlands easement. It's a drainage easement that designates the, the ability to access anywhere in there to be able to maintain that basin. And that, that's the same on all the basins.
And Mr. Chairman, do we do any type of a holdback on that in order to ensure that it's done?
We, we have taken a very sizable amount of money before he can even put up start work there. So, and we, it's held until work is completed. And I'm talking sizable. I mean, we have to get an estimate, he'll give us an estimate of, it'll be in the good chunk of change. And it's well protected and this board doesn't undercut. We usually, if he's, if the suggestion is, is ten thousand, which I'm gonna say it might be the hundreds, we're gonna go at least twenty percent more than whatever we require. And it's put into an account held by the town that can be drawn down as work is completed. So the protect town protects itself. We also protect by not releasing households. We might hold a certain number of households and as things get, developments starts to progress, then we'll, we'll release them. So the households lots plus security protects the town.
Have we ever entertained anything like this before? Putting basically a paved bridge across wetlands to get to another piece of property that's gonna put a twenty-nine house development on it?
It's, yeah, because this is called bridge, it's a bridge water. There are a number of pieces of property. It might not be.
That's a big development off the back of that. And there's a lot of houses that are gonna be pushing water down.
If he meets the, all the regulations, both ours and conservation's, we can't stop.
I, I just don't understand how something like this can possibly work when we lived on Tiffany Circle, which we don't now. We live on Copper Beach. Paul's Way got put in. I never got water in my basement until those two houses went in. And there were a whole bunch of us on Tiffany Circle that did. Water flows down. That water's gonna flow down and I wouldn't be surprised if those houses are not gonna hit these houses.
First off, Tiffany was built before the present standards was built. So a lot of subdivisions that were built years and years ago weren't built under the same standards.
No, Tiffany was, Tiffany was fine. It was Paul's Way that was built after the fact. And it was two houses and it pushed water into six different houses that had never had water before.
Again, I can't comment on that. I don't know anything about that project.
Yes?
Hi, Scott Holmberg on Spring Street. Not on butter, but on Spring Street. Quick question about the water. I heard the word well mentioned earlier.
No.
It's gonna connect to town water?
It's gonna be town water.
So we're gonna have less water than we already, than we already did. I'm sorry?
The well talk was on Facebook.
Okay, but I heard someone said, maybe not.
No, we try to connect the town water when we have possible, and I don't think we have any place in town.
Can the town afford having twenty-nine houses plus?
They will receive sufficient funds. The water department has its own standard for, for, for the fees being charged for the construction.
But we already have restrictions on water during the summer.
That's a debatable issue. That's not part of this board.
Oh, so we can debate it. If we use a sprinkler during, I don't ever use a sprinkler, but if someone wanted to use a sprinkler, we could debate the fact that we're gonna get fined. Or they are, but I'm not me, I don't use a sprinkler. We could debate that.
But that's not part of this.
Well, it is. It's using our water.
The water department used the plan and deems that they can supply the water.
So I should talk to the water department? Okay, that's fine.
Has this gone before water yet?
One of the departments that we had to hand deliver a set of these plans to was the water department, so.
They have forty-five days from tonight to give us an answer. And I have, in the past, number, past number of years, never seen them not deny.
But couldn't the town require them to drill wells?
The water department could, because you've gotta have, you've gotta have, you've gotta provide water for, to, to be allowed to have an occupancy for the, of the property, whether it's well water or town water.
Right, well, again, and also.
That's a border health issue.
I'm sorry, you mentioned that at some point the town may vote to make a town street.
To accept, except the roadway.
Right, the town would have to plow it.
At that point in time, yeah.
The town gets, the reason the town accepts streets is because the state gives them money for the amount of footage of streets. So it would increase what the state money is gonna give us.
Just in regards to the water, I'm Dylan Craig. I'm elected water commissioner. It hasn't been before, so it's not on our agenda yet.
Okay.
The subdivision doesn't go with water issue. If there's a water issue, this subdivision stops until, till a solution is, is set up. Because you can't have a house without water.
Correct.
It's a health issue.
Towns have put a ban on building, not ban of, moratorium on building.
Yeah, well, the only one in local to hear was, was the city of Brockton. We don't talk about it. Yes?
Hi, Audrey RC, twenty-two Copper Beach Circle. Just a question about the traffic on Crescent Street. There's thirty homes making two cars. That's an extra sixty, hundred extra cars. Have they thought or have you talked about the overflow of cars on that road, especially that intersection?
We don't have control of that.
Who, who would I talk to about that? Like that intersection, you know?
Outlawing, outlawing cars? I mean, cars, traffic is a problem everywhere. In Westwood, what it has the, the problem of is we have some very, some roads that are very convenient shortcuts.
True.
And really, that's not an issue with this subdivision.
Okay.
Lee?
Lee, lead us to one oh six South Elm Street. I just wanna go back to the lot sizes. Now, the board, the rule of regulations and the bylaws said that the lot size that you have is gonna be ninety percent buildable. Every lot size on that, that you have for those twenty-nine houses is ninety percent buildable?
It's, it's upland, yes.
Upland, but is it buildable or not?
This gentleman went through that whole.
Yeah, I know. I just wanna kind of go back. I just wanna.
We will, I, as I said to him, I'll say the same thing to you. We'll, I've already double checked it. I'll triple check that. And the consultant for the town will be reviewing all of these items and making sure we comply. So if there is one or two that don't comply, we'll make it comply, but I'm quite sure they all do.
Okay, and go to, go back on his thing about the trees. Do you have the tree warden go out and take a look at the trees in the area that are, do you say about twelve inches or whatever if there?
Did we have the tree warden? No, we did not.
Do you, do you have the tree warden go out and do it? Or is it something you ask for waiver?
That's up to, we, if that's up to do, the developer to meet with the DPW director.
You guys, are you guys not with the DPW? Do you, will you?
We'll do whatever we have to do.
Or is it something that you just, if not asked, you just don't bother?
No. This is the, we're just opening this hearing, we're just initiating it. Whatever we're asked to do, we're going to absolutely do our best to comply with. If not.
Because a lot of this will, will render on how many houses will be built. And I'm on the conservation side and you guys don't come in front of us.
Absolutely.
The culvert too, I just wanted to find out what size culvert was underneath?
We put two twenty-four inch culverts.
And that's, is that the minimum size or is that?
There's really no water flow. It's mostly.
But I'm just thinking of like species, any of the cross.
Well, let, let me be perfectly clear on the crossing.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to come in front of your commission, obviously. We're gonna have to go to DEP to get a water quality certification. And we're gonna have to get Army Corps is gonna have to approve it as well. So if anything comes about from those processes, we'll be adding those into this. So the, the river, the stream crossing standards don't apply here because we don't have a stream. There's no stream going through that area.
What about the species that are in there?
That's why we put twenty-four inch.
Okay, I understand. Is that gonna be picking up like foxes or whatever instead of going over the road?
Deer.
Getting hit, deer or just, you know, regular.
Deer, yeah, it can't accommodate.
Deer, I understand, but even still, it's just, I'm just trying to get in front. You guys gotta come in front of this board sometimes. We work together.
Yeah, we can absolutely take a look at things of that nature. And we'll have, again, we have a very good environmental consultant working on this project, LEC Environmental. And she wasn't able, Claire Hogaboom is the, is the lady's name who's involved here. She wasn't able to be here tonight. She had another meeting she had to attend. So probably at every future meeting and absolutely in front of your board, she'll be attending and she can address all of those, those items.
This is, this is one of many. There will be no determination made.
Oh, I understand.
I mean, this, this might be two, three months before things are ironed out and so.
Oh, I understand. I've just, and then also too, at the end of this, these are gonna be, become public subdivisions, not private? They're not asking, nobody's asking for private?
If he does everything according to what needs to be done and builds it to the standards that we, for our street acceptance regulations, it will be an accepted street. Doesn't have to be. He doesn't have to.
Because that'll, that'll determine whether or not who takes care of the detention areas, detention, and all that stuff, so.
Be no different than, you know, a whole bunch, I mean, we've accepted a dozen streets in the last three, four years, but they all meet the standards.
But there's also been private ways and people are like, oh, we can't get somebody down there during snow. So let's turn it back into a public way and you just, we wanna find out.
We have a number of private ways. There will never be town ways.
True, I understand, but there have been private ways turned into public ways for the town.
Not in my three years.
Well, with the one up off Long Island Street there. Can't think of the street there next to.
By the water tower.
Next to the farm road.
What, Pearl Road?
Is that Pearl Road?
Yeah, that, that all the standards.
But that was private at one point.
Well, all of them are private. All streets are private. They're all accepted.
I understand.
Yeah.
They have an HOA over there too.
Yeah, yeah, but that's because of the septic system. The HOA is on that is only this, because it's, they have a centralized leachive field. These will all have their individual.
What's the depth of the water table for that when you, of the test pits?
It varies throughout. There's, we have dozens of test pits in that. We, that is all public information and the board of health has it. We have some test pits also included, test pit logs included for the, for the infiltration detention basins included in the detailed sheets for these.
Just throw a couple off the end.
It's, every single one is different. They're all over the place, right? You know, not being evasive, but it really depends on where we are on the site. Yeah, it's very different. This is, these, like I said, these soils are very sandy up in this area. Little bit sandy, getting a little tighter. Then as we go back, that's why the back ones, detention basins, because the soils are much tighter back there. In general, the tighter soils, the higher the groundwater elevation. So as we move back into the site, we're getting groundwater at a higher elevation in relation to the existing ground surface essentially.
Okay, I just wanted to know, that'll build a, determine the size of the lots too, for the house lots?
Oh, yeah. You'll notice, if you take a peek at any of the grading we did, just about every house in the septic system has to be built up.
Yeah, but also out now because we have, we made a, to the wetlands, farther you go out, farther you gotta go out.
And that's why we maintain a fifty foot no disturb zone everywhere on this project. Because we know you guys want that.
Have you decided what types of houses or price range?
That's nothing to do with us.
Nothing to do with us.
We're involved with the streets and the drainage. What gets done on the sites is board of health or the building inspector. And conservation, conservation has some drainage stipulations that they can.
You don't have to worry about property values. I'm sure of that. Because unfortunately with the, with what's going on with the housing today and values of land, the, the price of the land kind of dictates what people are building for houses and that's just the cycle we're in.
I got a couple of questions. Al Crockett, two sixty-four Crescent. So where that new street's gonna come out, it's gonna be directly across from my driveway. Yep. So Crescent Street's a county layout. Does this project have to be approved through the county for them to come out onto?
County layout is basically what was done a hundred years ago when roads initially were built in the town.
Okay.
And it's a reference point for construction of other roads.
Okay. Is there a streetlight plan for this?
The select.
Okay.
We usually, this board requires, because of the streetlight issues and most likely, I think everything's gonna be underground, right?
Yes.
We have them put a, at the end of the driveway, a streetlight.
A decorative light.
A light that isn't, cannot be turned off with a switch.
On a pole.
We've done, we've done that in almost all our subdivisions over the past ten, twelve years.
Okay. But in this one here, not to interrupt you, but because there's no houses for that first whatever, we're gonna have to put some streetlights in that'll be maintained by the HOA. There's no, there's no other way to do that. Because that's way too far, you know, without any light, especially, I don't know what's out on Crescent Street for lights right now.
We're on telephone poles.
No, I understand. It's never every four or five floors. But we need, we need something, yeah, there's no way we can do it without some kind of light.
Headlamps on the reindeer.
So obviously this project is two sections. You got the small one there, then you got the other one out back. Which one's gonna be done first? The smaller one or the larger one?
Probably done together.
Okay. The culvert, what's the culvert gonna be? Is it gonna be concrete? Is it gonna be?
We're proposing HDP.
HDP, okay.
Benny DeChristopher, I live at two hundred Crescent Street. Can I just point out something here? Can you just, my, my house, I believe, is right here. And this is the existing house that's up there now?
Yeah, this is the existing. I see this gray, this gray light, that's, okay.
So the street's pretty much gonna come right across from my driveway, the entrance. Okay, is that what it's gonna be?
I thought we just determined it was like fifty feet away.
So just to show you.
So, just to show you, so that's your driveway, I believe, right? That's my, no, my driveway, see, that's my house. Oh, yeah, so you have to, a house, it's existing, so it looks like, more or less, yeah. So, I'm gonna have an entrance directly across this street from my driveway, pretty much, lovely.
So, you mentioned concrete curb, going in?
I don't think we, I'm sorry. Wasn't it granite? We're proposing vert, the six-inch precast concrete curb, and we can change it if the board asks us to, on the.
You don't want concrete?
No, we don't.
No, they want, they're not. We'd be happy to change that. So, it's gonna be vertical granite on the side with the sidewalk, cause we don't wanna have cave carved berm forming into a sidewalk.
Okay.
And then on the other side, it's gonna be cave carved.
So, the granite curb's gonna be on the wetland side, not the other side, so.
Well, it's probably wetlands on either side.
No, but I, I mean. On that one there.
Yeah, so the, this is the sidewalk, so that's.
The sidewalk's gonna be on that side.
Correct.
Would, yeah, I'll contract, since you're the, gonna be the guy building it, would you be willing to approve the sidewalks on Crescent Street? Between old Crescent and your last proj, your last street?
Yeah, that's no problem. We, we, it should be done.
The sidewalks are horrible on that street.
So, I mean, if it beat up.
If we can, if we can get a little something.
We, in most cases with all us subdivisions, we try to, if, if one runs into the other, the contract is usually, because it's an asset to them.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else in the public?
Yep. I have, I have a question, um, on this developer's last project, he used glass under the roadway as a pack material. And it must've got mixed with the boom at some point, because it's all over lamp posts. Can we ask him not to do, use glass as fill underneath the road?
So, that material was something that was approved by DEP, um, that's no longer available.
So, you won't be using glass, okay, cause it's everywhere over there?
Yeah, because it's, it's rough, he has to adhere to the DEPs and, uh, you know, and the mess, uh. Road, what is it?
DOT.
DOT, construction regulations, that's material used.
But you can, you can enforce an order of conditions of your own, just say, we don't wanna use that West Bridgewater, right?
There's no prob, no problem with that, it's just, like you said, it was something that was approved by DEP that we used, but it's no longer available, so we're not using it.
Good.
And won't use it.
Okay, do we have any new questions?
I got one more, I picked up one, you guys are building up the lots in the back. So, obviously they're wet, if you're gonna haul material in, to make them buildable.
Well, you need a four, in, in soils like this, we need a four-foot separation between the septic system and the, uh, the, the high groundwater elevation and the bottom of the septic system. So, between groundwater elevation and the top of the septic system, and then the proposed grade, you've got six or seven feet. And if, and in certain areas back here, we had, um, groundwater approximately two feet down. And which is typical of this type, this type of soil. Um, so you do have to build another two feet, then your septic system, then your, uh, your material above the septic system, which you have to have a foot above it, a minimum, a foot above it, so that's why they're raised. This is all upland, but this is all, this wetlands line has been reviewed and, um, fixed by, uh, what's called in the INRAD, um, through the conservation commission. So, this is upland, this is wetlands, wherever that li, line is delineated, that's, uh, gone through a thorough review.
In our engineering, it still has, the plan has not got back to us. So, once we get his things, the odds will be given and discussed by the board. All our meetings are open and public, so if we continue to update, you know, it's, we'll be, you can contact, go on, on, uh, and check the calendar. But, if, uh, any new questions, I need to read in two letters.
Hi, um, Lily DeChristopher, I have a request, I hope, um, gonna, you know. Bob, if you, if you, if your company doesn't mind, can you put the house on the cross street, um, as a reference to?
Put your house, put the houses that are across the street in the plan?
Not just mine, I think at two sixty-four, the, you know, just. Put a few houses there.
Yeah, no problem.
All right.
Yeah, we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
The, the good news is, like I said, our surveyor lives like right around here somewhere, and you, I think he lives on Jewel or something.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, I'm gonna read in two letters, one from the fire chief, and the fire chief is, uh, he has no problems with, with the hydrants within, uh, Jeffrey Drive, Fedway and Henry. But he wants, he's requesting at least one put in the middle on Fedway between Old Crescent and. And where's the hydrant on Old Crescent Street area? How long between the la, the hydrant on, in the subdivision? Where's the hydrant in the subdivision? Because he'd like to split the difference and put a hydrant on Fedway. Because if, if something goes wrong, it's a long lay of holes to get out to Crescent Street to feed that subdivision.
As far as we're concerned, the chief is always the expert on these matters, and whatever he wants for hydrants will do. Can I get a copy of that, uh, sent to me, it doesn't have to be now.
The fire chief's letter and the.
And then what I'll do is.
Maybe be in the folder if I do, but, I think I might have printed it out.
I'll try to fire, uh, follow up with the chief too, and send him a copy of the device.
Yeah. Okay, he'll give you.
Thank you very much.
Cause we can put some more. Second thing is mainly, Dylan's already covered it, is the letter from, uh, I think it's, I believe it's Tim Hayes, from the conservation agent regarding, uh, the tree, you know, making sure only's cut what's cut.
Yeah, we'll take a look.
And, uh, tree planting, it's, uh, the environmental assessment, which you've said, has gotta go through two or three other agencies to go through anyways.
For the crossing, yes.
Yeah, protection of natural features, uh, open space regulation appears to be missing on the plan. And, uh, lot areas and regulations, which we have already discussed, but it's already written in a letter from Mr. Hayes, Jimmy's guy.
Once I see, I have not seen these.
There's no question. Take that one, because I can get another call.
No, we will, uh, address every issue.
Okay, and I'll open it to the board, any discussion? Got any comments, Jimmy?
I have a few, um, I know, um, somebody just touched base on reconstructing the sidewalk between those two.
Yeah.
Um, also show all the wheelchair rents, like, you know, not only on Crescent Street, but at the end of the sidewalks, and, you know, just show the location, so. Yeah, I started looking at the area between the retained, the roadway and sidewalk and the retaining wall as you're going through the wetlands. Like, on one side, there's only gonna be, you get sidewalk, and you're gonna have two feet of something that's gonna grow wild and. You know, I, I'm thinking, you know, from Old Crescent Street all the way up to the first lot, it's like eleven hundred feet, that's just gonna grow wild after years.
I mean, we've discussed it, I think in the preliminary one, was to eliminate any space between sidewalks, so that there's no, no question.
So.
Yeah, but he's got.
The wall, we have a wall to get through that, you want the wall right up.
Right up to the sidewalk? Yeah, just to eliminate maintenance.
Yeah, well, the other problem is, I know, that's like an eight-foot drop between the roadway, or seven-foot, between the roadway and the wetland, which requires a guardrail.
Yep.
Um, I noticed the wall, I was looking at your wall detail, but that's not a crash-tested type of wall, you can't use that as a guardrail. So, you're gonna have to look to see how you can integrate, um, you know, crash-tested guardrail system into that. Or if they make the walls that way, I don't, I don't think, the wall you have.
We'll look into that, um, the wall manufacturer, um, we've used them before at crossings many times. We'll look into that, we'll get it from, uh, we'll get some statements from the, uh, from the wall manufacturers.
Yeah, cause we'll need, yeah, it should be, it was a TS-two type.
It's, it's difficult to do without having three feet of material, three feet of earth material behind the guardrail.
I know, yeah, cause you have.
So, a typical guardrail's gonna require us to widen that area instead of narrow it.
Yeah, yeah, you have to look into it, I know you need, well, you can, you can do things with it, but you just.
Take a look.
That's the concern, is if somebody goes off that side, if they, you know, if it's a regular concrete wall, they could crash right through and go down.
Well, typically, it's just a glassing, you're not gonna be getting a direct hit on the, on the.
But again, it's, I'm looking at the future, if it's a public way and something happens.
Absolutely, we'll take a look at it.
Um, and just one thing too, I know lots seven, you're probably gonna come back for Form A, is that what I heard earlier?
Yeah, typically, that's gonna be a Form A.
One, lot one and six are not Form A, right? I mean, they can be a Form A, but you're not, there's no plans on making that?
Uh, no, we'll just keep them part of the subdivision process.
Yeah, I just didn't wanna, cause I, I don't wanna, you know, if you make those Form A, then the driveways are off of Crescent Street, and there's two more driveways off of that. So, I wanted to just kinda make sure it's on the record.
You'd prefer it on the cul-de-sac, the driveways, yeah.
Yeah.
We agree, we prefer those on the cul-de-sac.
Tony, any questions?
No, I'm okay. Very responsive, when we had, last time.
Okay, uh, how long do you need to get things? Um, well, plus we've gotta hear from our engineer.
Yeah, uh, that's really the driving factor now, and, um, we have no idea what the extent of that.
I thought we'd have something from him.
Uh, he's, he's very responsive, and, um, is the board okay, um, with, if we do, between this meeting and the next, is this board okay with us contacting the consultant directly?
And make sure he sends, you know, his, his stuff to us, which he will be. Cause we would send it to you, once we got, got it.
Typically, if we can meet with them, it's, it makes it a lot easier than that, to just keep coming back. So, that's appreciated, thank you, we, we'll try to do that, so, I don't know, when do, when do you meet next?
We meet the first and third Wednesdays of each month.
So, um.
The next one is gonna be?
Twentieth? Yeah. Probably, there's not gonna be anything done between now and the twentieth, we don't even.
So, we're talking the first, first Wednesday, shoot for the first Wednesday in January?
Well, did you, have, have you scheduled anything with the ConCom yet, or?
We, uh, actually, we do have, uh, plans submitted to the conservation commission, and, um, we're on the agenda for last night's meeting. Um, and it's, we, it was continued until the next meeting, because we wanted to meet with this board first.
But it might be advantageous to you to settle with them before you come back to us. If there's any changes.
Yeah, that makes sense.
They have, will have, will make changes to that roadway. The key issue is that sixteen-foot roadway going in, sixteen hundred foot.
Yeah.
The Fedway going in.
Right, 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 right.
So, if, if there's gonna be any, any discussion, you already said, you got the Army Corps of Engineers, you gotta get the DEP. DEP and everybody else, I think, when they're satisfied, then you should come back with us.
Well, all of them are sat, that may be years down the line, we need to.
Yeah, but if they don't okay it, and.
Well, we can.
It, it can't.
Can we?
It can't move forward with, um.
Do we need that for, to move forward?
No, we'd still need, no, we don't need, I don't think, we don't even need ConCom, but they'd have, you know, if you approve it, and ConCom makes changes, you have to come back.
What I would suggest is maybe, um, we go through the processes with both boards, and then, uh, when one finishes, they, they, um, hold the meeting open until the other one's done.
Yeah.
You know, and then we can close them once everybody's happy, so we don't have two separate plans out there, which we've seen that before.
That's, the thing is, is we need, especially under the new standards, that, that ConCom is putting their plans.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of what they say depends on how this is built.
So, um, can I sugge, so, I believe they're going back, and I don't know if the gentleman was on the phone, I'm still. I believe they're meeting two, uh, they're meeting two weeks from yesterday.
I think so.
So, it's just opening the hearing with them, discussing with them, and see how they wanna proceed, and I can report back to you on what they say.
So, you wanna come back to us?
We're, we're third week in January, probably.
Yeah, third week in January, okay.
And, and at the very least, at that time, we'll have your consultants stuck back.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot of things that have to be done.
We got a lot of moving parts, cause it's still moving.
Yeah, like I said, like we both said, it's the first meeting, and we're not close yet, so. That'd be great, and here on the third.
Second, you mean the second meeting?
Yeah.
The third Wednesday.
Which is, I was just, do we have to, it says decision due January seventeenth.
Tracy's the one that will answer that.
Yeah, I know, I'm just thinking if we, when, when is that first?
We don't, we can extend it, the seventeenth is not an issue, right?
No, it's not, no, it's not on this side, obviously.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's the same day as the ninety days, so we can extend it.
From there?
From there.
So, okay, so, it'll be the seventeenth?
And if not, if we, for some reason, we have to continue that meeting, we'll have to give you.
A written, give us written notice, and we'll vote it at that meeting if you can make it.
Okay. I'm sorry, so what, what was the date?
January seventeenth, thank you.
That's the third Wednesday?
Yes. Okay, we're gonna, this meeting will be continued until January seventeenth, where we will continue.
No, no, this is go out, we're just going to the first meeting, so, in the Tribune, down, down, website.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Oh, I gave him my clock.
Oh, oh, okay.
You just have to put it another way.
Okay.
Okay, you need to, you need to take a one-minute break. Yeah.
No, you only got a half a minute.
You need to submit a check?
Yeah, we don't have an amount yet.
Oh, that's the, yeah, that's the check from, from the, uh, engineer.
Right.
Okay.
As soon as you give, give us an amount, we'll.
Yeah, okay. Well, he hasn't, he hasn't read a, or did he? Didn't he give us a, did he give us something?
Yeah, I thought I saw something here, sixteen.
No, thirty, the requirement's thirty thousand square feet.
Okay.
So, just on the three quarters.
Six, he's given us an estimate of six thousand, seven twenty.
Okay, okay, check right about.
Okay, just get it into the treasury.
He just gave it to him. What's that?
No, I know, I knew what, I was just.
Yeah, he found it.
You're gonna take a five-minute break?